Got no green light. I just waved at camera randomly. Yeah, I've never seen it before. The one back there is green. Yeah. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Louisville City Council, and we have our workshop session, and we do have a forum. It is six o'clock. First up is discussion of consent and regular agenda items. So council, if you would go ahead and look at your agendas. I've got Councilmember Toria with the application. Okay, and then I've got Councilmember Jones with the flags. If Councilmember Jones is not here, could I have a volunteer?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Item C, graduation of our Louisville Citizens University. Item D, public hearing. Item Z, rezoning. Any questions about D more? Item E, visitors forum. Item F, consent agenda. We've got item F2, which is the minutes. Item F3, litter agreement regarding the future use and occupancy of the salon shop.
It's funny to meet with those others. So if somebody at home is the building...
It was hard to write in a memo. It was very complex. Yeah, so there is a gentleman who owns the building, and they used to operate the salon shop. That was their business as well. They then sold the business to one water marina company. So now the operator of the business is a sub-licency, sub-concessionaire to them. So it was like...
Obviously plenty of margin in that business. Item 4, approval of a revocable license for use of premises between us and the Department of Veterans Affairs for bribe. Item 5, agreement between the city and John R. McAdams for landscape architectural dramatic designs as to the Cassaville Trail portal. Item 6, agreement with Branson or Carroll for design services for outdoor storage for the grand theater.
So we don't know what that looks like yet?
No, they would have to go through old time designing.
I assume it's going to be in the back there.
In the parking lot?
Item 7, resolution of the council supporting our application to the Texas Department of Transportation's 2025 transportation alternatives set aside call for projects.
So this is just a... This is a grant application, essentially?
Yes. So there are other grants we don't pay for, but we just want to force that resolution.
Is it because of the amount?
Or it might just be because of text on...
It is a text on. Yeah, but it also, if we get it, it's $1.12 million worth.
How are we feeling? Our chance is bad.
Amazing, because we're Louisville.
Pretty good.
Yeah, pretty good. Okay, pretty good is pretty good.
Richard is very, very positive person, also good at that. David is less so. Probably somewhere in the middle.
Text op told us that we had a good chance and advises to submit.
And they're kind of...
How much is our match?
It's a 20% match. Yeah, so we're working on that through the budget right now.
Item A, alternative standards with landscaping for Northside Air Conditioning. What's on that one?
Where are they currently at? Are they moving to this location? Is that what that's...
I'm not sure where they're at.
They are in Louisville, though. Did I not read that?
That's what I thought. I thought they're like on Ben and Wayne or something.
Says they've operated in Louisville since 2004.
It'd be quite a Google search.
There you go.
Well, the way that's all laid out, that particular office mark, there's really just no way they can... I don't know how they'd be able to do this. And so this does not require that she see a consent requirement or not?
Item 9, initiating the board permission committee appointment process. Council, I think each one of you have at your seat, I've created teams this year and the boards to oversee if you've got any... The lengths, the buck stops with the... If you've got any questions or concerns around, or any comments to this, please, you know?
It does bother me. We're going to do this thing and do it.
Thank you for that. Item H, reports. General, I don't know if I got any, do you have any reports from the department heads? Oh, here we go, right there. New process, folks. So just so everybody knows, what we're going to do here is our reports as opposed to walking through. We're going to have directors just file if they're interested in making a report, and then I'll just call them off immediately. This looks great. I didn't even think about how would we do this, so that's perfect. It just makes it easier for everybody. We have, we do have closed session tonight? Okay. If there are no other questions or comments on item A, we'll go ahead and move on to item B, compensation and benefits update with our Director of Human Resources, Ted Phillips.
All right, good evening. So what I'm going to do over the next few slides, it's 37 slides, I'll try and go as quickly as possible, but you are welcome to stop me at any point in time if you would like to. Really want to give you all an update on kind of the market dynamics and how they connect their pay structures, talk a little bit about employee benefits and premiums for next year, and then close out with the topic around TMRS and retiree COLA. And it's kind of a complex and new topic, so I've got a number of slides that make sure that we have clarity on what that looks like. Like I said, it's 37 slides. I'll move through fairly, fairly quickly. It's going to start focused on the compensation piece, particularly looking at our market data out in the external marketplace. Before I really get deep into the presentation, I want to specifically, there's a lot of data in here, want to thank Lauren De La Luz and Charlotte Reeves from my team, put in a lot of hours, as well as the budget team and city management over the last six weeks or so putting this presentation together. So let's talk about, let's start with employee pay. This is a reminder, you'll have seen this slide in past years, but primarily when we talk about how is pay delivered to employees, we look at two main things. One is, is the market dynamics. That's the external forces. So that is, if you think about for any employee, how do you set their pay structures? You look at external forces and identify what's competitive out in the marketplace. So that's, that's the market look. We'll dig deep into that here in a few moments. The second piece is how do employees progress through whatever structures you create? For a lot of our public safety employees, that's their step program, and then we also have open ranges and merit movement for our employees. And then we created a third bucket a couple of years ago that is kind of a unique piece. It's kind of our, it's our program in-house to grow our own, and that's our job family progression. And so appreciate council support today for us creating that program, and that's where we have its retention tool, creating line level positions and creating a senior level corlet where an employee meeting certain criteria can move up at that level during their time here. And so that's, that's a one-time amendment that happens for that employee. That's not a year-over-year thing like these other two pieces. So looking at last year, what we did is there was significant movement that this council supported and that was included in this year's budget. We moved police officer by 5.73% last year, firefighter by 6.2, our dispatch and detention, similar percentages. For the larger portion of our employees, our general employees, we didn't move our structures last year. We left those where they were, so no movement there, but we did choose a subset of employees where their positions were clearly behind and adjusted those. And I'm glad to put on this slide, but we also moved our aquatics positions within our part-time structures last year. On the merit side and step side, we had steps as usual for sworn and dispatch and detention, and we had a 3% merit last year for all the general employees, a 3.5% merit, excuse me. And then the newer piece, job family progression, that we created in fiscal year '24, we had 65 employees that have progressed to that senior level, and we think that's a great tool to help for retention of staff over time. So that's looking backwards. Now looking ahead, what's the market showing us? We do this every year, and just to remind you of kind of, excuse me, when we go out and look at the marketplace, we're looking at 17 comparative organizations. You guys have seen these a number of times, but these are folks that we could lose people to or pull people from in our local area. This council, back in 2023, identified as we worked through the compensation study, a philosophy around how we wanted to approach employee compensation, and at that time, the council said, we would like to, one, be a leading city, which operationally looks like targeting a top third of pay, and then, two, caveat that with the level of leadership is to be determined annually based on budgetary availability. So that's, those are the parameters that we start from, based on how you all set those historically. So as we operationalize those in the current year, we say getting to top third, when you see the future slides here, instead of referencing a bunch of percentages here, calling it market plus is that top third level. And then we built in a second level in the slides that come ahead, just because we know it's a tight budget here, so we want to be thoughtful, and so there's, there's a second option that's modified market plus that isn't quite the level of market plus. You'll probably seen these on social media over time. They circle around every few months. You know, there's a lot of things you can take from this. Not all the data points are entirely accurate. These are done by third parties. Sometimes they get the data points right, sometimes they don't. But I share this with you today to say, we show up on a lot of these lists, and I think as time has gone by, we are actually showing up more on them. On the side-by-side, on the right-hand side, this is then and now, this is their website, looking at the data set of top salaries for police officers one year and then a year later, and you see that Louisville shows up as number four on top starting salaries this year and was not on the list the prior year. So that's, that's actually, that's a positive, showing that this council, this management team, this organization has really put salaries as a commitment and that we've been progressing in a lot of these out there. It continues to be a tight marketplace. Every folks are competing all the time. They just want to share that with you. So let's, let's dig into it. What does police look like? So I mentioned on the prior slide, what we're doing on these slides is we're breaking them up into market plus is, is the ideal to get to top third, and our current state is, in this case, police officer, our top step for police officers is 105,725 against our 17 cities. I believe that puts us 10th currently as it stands today. So if we moved to the market plus level, that would be an increase to the police officer in the upcoming year of 3.1%. And similar to the ranks above on the police side, what you see at the bottom here is under that structure, what we would be hiring new police officers at $86,000 a year and top them out at almost $109,000 a year. We, you know, every city doesn't have the same number of steps. We have a pretty aggressive philosophy here. We just have, our folks progress within about six years from bottom to top, or if they're a lateral hire from another department, they progress even faster to get to their top out. And so this, yeah. Market plus gets us to the top third, which is sixth. Modified market plus, in this case, gets us a little bit lower, I believe, to ninth, and that's just a percent less than the market plus.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I know that these, these top salaries that get posted on social media are very, they're very high level, and they could be really misleading.
Yes.
And I've seen them more than one time being used as a way to say that we're not investing in our police officers and public safety, but I think one of the biggest things that's a discrepancy that's never talked about at all is what you just said about how we have fewer, a fewer or a shorter timeframe to get from your starting salary to the top out. On this list of, on slide A, on this list that we're looking at how we compare, are these cities all within the same top out schedule that we are, or are they all variable?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have the exact number of steps in front of me right now, but here's a good point of reference. On the prior slide, you see Plano is a 20-year, 20 steps, so they're doing 20 years and we're doing six years. Garland PD is eight years and we're six years. Allen PD is five years and we're six years, so they're similar. So I think it's, it's variable across the group. I don't have the full data set on me, but I think to your point, I think we're towards the front end of that.
And that's like, should we be taking that into account when we're looking at the salaries, though?
We could take it.
If it's going to take me six years to get there versus 12 years to get there, I mean, that's a much bigger benefit to me, you know, on the Louisville side than somewhere else. So I've just, where does that factor in, or does it?
When, strictly speaking, right now, it doesn't factor in, because we're looking at max to max. So if we, if we identify that, like I've seen some side-by-sides where you take, you take, you take two agencies and you put across a 20-year time span, what would be the earnings across the whole time span? So there's other ways that you can do it, but that's not built into this analysis.
I'm just, if I were a police officer looking for a position and looking where I wanted to go, I would be looking at that, saying, okay, well, how quickly can I get to that number if it's going to take me six years here versus 12 here? You know, that's just, I know they're probably looking at that, and so we might have a more competitive edge than we think we did.
Yeah, you're right.
We're actually, I mean, with our, with our benefits and compensation, we're attracting people. It's not, we are going...
I was going to ask, have we had many exit interviews over the last year that have said pay was the reason?
No, I think, you talking about across all employees?
Specifically police.
Specifically police. I think we've had a few folks leave in recent months, and I think we've got, we've got kind of a mixed bag. We've got a couple that are, some folks that are newer, that are pursuing larger agencies. We've got a few of those, and a few folks that just want to change a cetera, but not a lot saying salary, no.
These are today's pay, right?
Yes, ma'am.
What's today's pay? This is one of the previous slides.
Yeah, this is today.
This is today's.
If we look at that previous slide, the one that's got this, I've gone out and I've actually analyzed this data, and these are pulled from across the board, some from 2024, some from mid-2025.
Absolutely.
Some from 2023. It's really hard to do an apples-to-taps comparison with this data, and I'm convinced sometimes this gets posted. Timing is everything. I think some people look at it month-to-month, and as soon as we look as bad as possible, it pops on the social media. But anyway, this is, it's, it's an interesting stat, but it's just so much behind this data that it's hard to compare.
So that's police. I wanted to add this slide this year, which is to show you, like we said earlier, you're going to have this conversation, what's changed over that period of time. So for police officer, you see Louisville highlighted, this is year-to-year percent change across the organizations for police officers specifically. So we moved 5-plus percent. Across the 17 cities, you saw more than a 4% average increase. You see some real variability here. You see a few folks move aggressively. Sometimes it's folks that were way lower than us, but we're, we're pretty aggressive on this chart. Now looking at fire data, it's a similar story, just slightly different. Right now, today, at our top pay for firefighter, 99,905, we're down here about 12 against the group. So if we move to market plus, putting us in the top third or sixth, that would increase the 99,9 to 103,6, or a 3.74% increase for the firefighter rank. Taking that same methodology up to the ranks above, it's a little bit less at those higher ranks. And then if we back that off a percent, that would push us back two spots here as far as our ranking if we did the modified market plus, and it decreases those numbers by 1%. Similarly, on fire, we were fairly aggressive last year, and a few cities were very aggressive. On, on the average, it was almost 5% of movement at our comparative organizations for firefighters. So I'll keep giving you more good news. Dispatch and detention, we, these are our other civilian positions in the police department that we put on steps, and so we're seeing somewhat similar movement there. We're seeing at the, at the market plus level, a 4% for officer, for detention officer, a 5% for dispatcher, and similar numbers for the supervisors above them. These two show year-to-year about a 3.8% increase on detention officer and about a 4.8 on dispatcher pay across our comparative organizations. So general government, this looks a little bit different. Imagine we've got all those very specific jobs, and then we've got 220 other jobs that we've got to then figure that are on open ranges, that we've got to figure out how to benchmark those. So we look at 30 individual jobs that are good benchmarks across these groups, and what we identified on this cycle is the market has moved since we initiated the compensation study a couple of years ago. And so have, have a basis for a recommendation for up to 3% of market movement for those positions at the market plus level, or a 2% movement for the modified market plus level. There, there are a couple of subcategories. We have our trades mechanic jobs, that those are actually market competitive right now, and so we don't have any recommendations to make changes there. And then we, working with the budget team, we've identified, when y'all do your council-appointed positions a couple of months from now, we don't always have that budgeted, so we're putting some money aside right there, just in case you'll want to spend some money on your council-appointed positions as well. The thing we hadn't looked at in a little while that we just wanted to bring to light was this is an area where we think that we're, we're leaders right now. This is starting pay for full-time positions. These are not our seasonals or our part-timers, but for full-time positions working at the city, today, we're at 1870 as our, as our lowest-paid full-time employee, and that is only beneath three other of the 17 cities. And if we made the adjustment by either 2 or 3%, we remain in that same spot, but over $19 now are for our full-time lowest-paid employees. On our part-time structure I mentioned earlier, we've made major adjustments to our whole aquatics and lifeguards positions last year. This year, we focused more on our lowest-level part-time positions, our lowest-paid part-time positions, I should say, and so we have recommended a slight structural adjustment where it just gets the start pay of this group up by about 50 cents, changes their structure slightly, increases their pay slightly, and then kennel tech pushes up a level from the part-time 1 to part-time 2. So that's all the market stuff. So now we switch to how do you maintain? So steps is what we do for police officers, firefighters, dispatchers, and detention officers on this side. Y'all seen slides like this before, but if you don't recall, because we've pushed people in fairly aggressively, we have a lot of folks that already topped out. So we have about 22% of police and 24% of fire that are eligible for steps, but so they would typically get, depending on what, what rank they're at, typically like a 4% step for those that are eligible during the year if they're not, not yet topped out. And then a similar thing for dispatchers. So job family progressions. I'm pleased to share with this newer program, we have 28 different job titles across the organization that now have a senior level. We have 65 employees that have now progressed to the senior role in the various titles that are at the bottom of the screen. We anticipate just maintaining that existing program in the upcoming year. We, we actually track where folks are at on their journey of being eligible for that higher level based on their qualifications, their skill set, et cetera, and so we expect about 35 more folks to go in the, in the coming year and progress to their higher level positions. We have a few, we have eight new positions that we would like to add, that we intend to add as part of the job family progressions in this cycle, and it's a positions on the right here, so we don't have a path for admin positions. Some of our engineering positions, permit, lab tech, engineering tech, gear operations worker, so we've got those built in for creating a path for a similar trajectory for those folks. Over time, that'll impact up to 40 employees in addition to the first 20 jobs we had on the prior page.
What's the, so what's the amount of time for a person to go from administrative assistant to senior administrative assistant?
It's a great question. So what we do is we identify which ones we want to do, and then we, and we budget them, and then we go back and we build them out. So we haven't built these out, but we've built all the ones in the prior before. So what we do is we say, like, if you have a job where, for example, I don't have, I don't have the specifics off the top of my head, but let's just say buyer, if I have a regular buyer that requires a bachelor's degree and two years of experience, the senior buyer might require a bachelor's degree and four years of experience plus either certification and/or, and/or a combination of additional demonstrated skill sets like leading on projects, et cetera. So we build up something that would be achievable in a reasonable timeframe, and then we also build the criteria that you can only progress after you've been with this organization for at least a year. So you can't just walk in the door in that new role. You have to actually be here and demonstrate your capabilities before you'd be eligible to move to that. So all these things cost money. This slide always comes with a caveat that some things may be funded. Again, we're seven weeks out from budget. A lot of, a lot of hard work and preparation is upcoming for the management team as they get, as they get things together to bring to you all in early August. One thing I draw your attention to on here that I didn't already go through is we did not have merit in the prior sides. That is for progression for general government employees. That's something that we're considering and identifying if there's feasibility for it, and we'll clarify that before we get to August.
It's important to note, like, especially with general government, when we're moving the market, we're also moving people with the market. So that doesn't mean that people aren't getting an increase in their salary. If the market moves by 3%, their salary also moves by 3%. So I don't want you to think that government without merit gets nothing.
Yes.
So that's part of that. The benefit to market, for merit, though, is moving people, if the, if the market moves 3% and the people move at the bottom of the market, move 3%, they're all sitting at the bottom. So merit pushes you into the range so that you aren't hiring people at the same pay as someone who's been here for a year or two. So that's beneficial, but it's all about what we can fit within the budget. I can tell you, having looked at, looked at all of the requests today, it is, it is, it's going to be tight with regard to getting all of that in, especially with all of the other compensation you've got kind of layered on top of it. But we are still looking at it, because obviously it's going to be the best, best practice not to have that compaction, that compression.
All right. And then move on to compensation. Do we have any other questions on that, or should I keep going?
Keep going.
All right. So this is just a quick stopover on, in the area of employee benefits, and so there's a lot of words on this slide. I'm not going to read them all to you, but I'll just say this. We changed our three plans to two plans in 2024. We moved to the purple and green plans. These were in response to requests from employees. We, they've gone really well. But in our, we knew when we moved from three plans to two plans, you don't do it, it doesn't all go perfectly as far as it's a, it's a phased thing over time that we want to change the cost share on our purple plan. So as costs rise, what we want to do is shift some of those costs, specifically to the purple plan, not to the green plan. So as we see costs do, do continue to rise, as we spend money on healthcare for employees, that we want to pass on relatively small, but some cost to the participants in the purple plan next year. The increases are what's shown down here, over here on the right, is comparing it to the current rates. We always do an analysis, anytime we look at moving, and rates have not moved in a significant period of time, no significant increase in premiums to Louisville employees since 2020. I know you all know from your, if you, if you're covered by your employer, they usually go up every year or every couple of years at the least. So I think what we're, what we're going to model going forward is more of a consistent, smaller increases every year versus waiting an extended period of time and possibly having a large increase. So that's what we have built in for next year, but we always do an analysis of our lower, lowest-paid employees and the impact, and if there's a pay increase, they would still have net pay beyond any increase to their medical premiums next year. Last topic, oh, before I make the last topic. So y'all did a bunch of great work back in March, and y'all approved us moving forward with the retiree medical premiums. And so we did, Charlotte did a bunch of good work. In April, we did open enrollment for our current retirees, and unsolicited through that process, we had a number of retirees just give kudos and feedback, and we want to share that back to y'all, since y'all were the decision-makers in that process. We heard you're the greatest, you and all others involved, thank you. This is awesome. Please thank the council, city managers, and HR staff for making this happen. Thank you so much to you and city staff. What a blessing, yay. And one particular retiree, who we will not name, said, sweet Jesus, thank you.
I feel like that was Charlotte.
Nope.
Nope, nope. She wouldn't care if we told you. So thank you all for supporting that, and I know the current retirees appreciate it. I know city employees, some of our future retirees very much appreciate that as well. Last thing I wanted to go over, it's a bunch of slides, we'll all try and go through it very quickly, is so talking about TMRS, non-retroactive COLA. So I'm going to unpack, what is TMRS? What is COLA? What is non-retroactive? And we'll, we'll walk through it here in a moment. So what is TMRS? TMRS is the Texas Justice for Retirement System. It consists of 930 participating cities. We participate in it. It's a great benefit for our employees. So it's our pension system effectively. It's a cash balance plan. It's not defined benefits, not defined contribution. It's a mix thereof. What happens is while our employees work here, they automatically have 7% of their salary pulled to TMRS, goes into their account, that could count earnings interest every year. When they eventually do retire, that gets double matched on the city side to whatever number they have in, and then that gets annuitized based on their age and, and the contributions they put in up to that point, the interest earned. So that's how the program works. Part of the program that we've, that we participate and that we have built into our rates is we also say, when the retirees take that annuity and they start collecting it every year, that we do build in a certain level of COLA for them, because otherwise they have no increase to that earning over the rest of their lives. So COLA is a cost of living adjustment. You guys know that. The COLA with TMRS is a... So COLA is a cost of living adjustment. You guys know that. The COLA with TMRS is a consumer price indexed item. So cities can choose through TMRS to select 30%, 50%, or 70% of CPIU. So we have selected 70% as have most of our, or the majority of our comparator cities, of the slight majority. And so this is an area where we're proud that we are on a higher level of benefits for our retirees and they get the benefit of that 70% COLA benefit currently. So the way it works today is it's called a retroactive COLA. And it's quite frankly, it's contrary to what you would imagine, how you would imagine it would work. So basically, each retiree receives a different percent increase in their benefit depending on their years of retirement. In general, the longer retired the person, the greater the percent increase in the current benefit. So for 2026, a retiree in that year would receive a COLA benefit of anywhere from 2.02 to 2.46%, depending on how long they've been retired. So it's individually calculated on a person-by-person basis, thereby creating different percentages for every single employee. I'm sorry, retiree, not employee. So back in last session, HB 2464 passed, and this ordinance gave cities some flexibility to move from this retroactive COLA to a non-retroactive COLA. Specifically, the second bullet point here by ordinance, cities can have 70% retroactive COLAs. They can continue to maintain them, but in non-retroactive fashion. But however, this is something that they attempted to, it was set to sunset this year, this calendar year. They tried to get some more legislation passed in the 89th session. They were not successful. And so this does actually sunset at the end of this year. So it puts us at a decision point on whether we want to move into the non-retroactive calculation. So what is that? The non-retroactive calculation is really what you would imagine a COLA to be if you just kind of put it out on a piece of paper. In this example, the 2024 CPI was 2.89%. If you take 70% of 2.89%, you get 2.02%. So in this scenario, the non-retroactive, every retiree on the plan will get 2.02% increase in their current annuity in the upcoming year. That's the non-retroactive COLA.
It's a lot to add, I know.
It's just a lot of words, sorry.
You can do it.
Oh, yeah, I almost said it.
You can.
So TMRS new non-retroactive COLA feature is less expensive and it's more equitable than the traditional retroactive COLA. And so what does this mean? It means all current and future retirees receive the same percent as I just said. This also, if we move to the non-retroactive, it actually says the city cannot lower that 70%, which is a benefit to the employees. And I already mentioned that this sunsets, so we have to make a decision before the end of the calendar year. So what you see in the next couple of slides is a model. It was created roughly 11 months ago. It is not current. We're going to get current numbers in the next few weeks, but it does illustrate, and it's at least approximately accurate. Got a lot of stuff on the slide. The top half is just our benefit, comparing our benefit. And it's only making one change in this scenario, which is changing from retroactive to non-retroactive COLA. And with that one change, what you see happen down here is this is the rate that the employer is paying per employee, the 3% of employee salary that we're paying to TMRS every year, 1,805. If we switched to non-retroactive, it would decrease by about 3/4 of a percent. Similarly, our unfunded actual liability goes down by about 4.3 million, and our funded ratio goes up by about a percent. So financially, it's beneficial for the long-term, for the longevity of the plan. Put another way, if you put those side by side and you said, we've switched to non-retroactive in that scenario, in the upcoming year, it won't be exactly this, but it'll be similar to this, it would decrease how much the city would contribute by $656,000. So it's a pretty big year-to-year change. It also changes the overall unfunded liability and funded ratio. So let's talk about the impact to retirees. So we have 592 retirees receiving a payment for TMRS. I do want to clarify, when I say 592, if I showed you the whole sheet, you'd see some retirees that are getting $10 a month. They just took a little bit they had, and that's the, it's not their full retirement. And then you have some people with larger dollars. But when we go across the group, the median across the 592 retirees is that they have about, they're getting a monthly benefit of about $1,916 a month. And again, there's a lot of variability within that data set. So what we identified and took four examples here at the bottom, but across this whole group, on average, this change from retro to non-retro would impact the retirees in the upcoming year by about $2.50 per month. So as you see a retiree, this is a long retired employee. They've been retired 34 years, or retiree, excuse me, they've been retired 34 years. Their monthly benefit is about $1,500. Under the current plan, that would increase from 1,468 to 1,504. That's 2.43%. If we switch to the non-retro, then they still increase from 1,468 to 1,498, but they get the same 2.02 that everybody else gets. So the difference between those two numbers in that individual case is $6. Again, on median across the whole group, it's $2.50. But it's not taking anything away from anybody, but it is decreasing some of the COLAs in certain situations down the road. However, it creates a more equitable and consistent playing field for all the retirees.
And aligns with what most people think of COLA.
And aligns with what I assumed before I dug really deep into it. I thought that's how it was working. So shame on me. But so so far, 64 cities have adopted the non-retroactive COLA, including two of our comparator cities, Irving and Garland. 41% of those did the exact same thing that we're considering, which is we're at 70%, staying at 70%, but just changing from a retroactive to non-retroactive. And so our policy considerations around this, I know this is a pretty wordy slide, but I do want to walk through it. The new non-retroactive COLA calculation is more equitable and understandable. Everyone gets the same percentage going forward. So in that example, 2.02 for everybody or whatever the future CPI is. Louisville offers the highest level of COLA at 70%. Moving to a new non-retroactive COLA calculation makes maintaining this benefit more financially sustainable in the future. So it puts us on a long-term path to stay at that high level of benefit. We've mentioned earlier the retiree medical premiums. So this council and this team put a greater commitment to retiree medical premiums this year. That's going to be to the tune of about $752,000 on the upcoming budget. And so moving to a non-retroactive COLA will help enhance financial sustainability while maintaining an excellent TMRS benefit within that context. And then just the reward for our budget preparation on this current cycle is as we've added in that retiree medical costs, that and other increases have caused departments to need to create add-back action steps. It's some of the inside baseball in our budgetary process, but effectively by freeing up some money here, that puts us in position to give, to fund a number of those add-backs going forward. And then the last piece is this is a one-time opportunity. It sunsets at the end of this year. And so that's why we're considering it on this cycle. So what we've got built in as a plan right now is that we'll get updated rates. I told you that some of those numbers were aged, but I think the updated rates will still be similar. We will build them into budget preparations for FY '26. And then our intention would be to come back at the same time on September 8th with the budget and come with a resulter, I think it's an ordinance to change the COLA to non-retroactive effective January 1, 2026.
And let me make sure I heard this right. Because we're doing this, we cannot by state law drop below that 70%?
Correct.
Okay, so that's an added benefit.
It's a benefit for the employees.
That's correct.
And retirees, yes. Because there's no guarantee for the retiree today that we stay at 70% forever.
Right. If we went sideways, we could drop to 50 or 30, right?
Yes, sir. So.
Is there any feedback?
If you're going to do it, this is a great time to do it.
Yep, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So let's go back to the hourly rates slide. Okay, another point. And I'm looking, and I'm trying, I'm cutting. How do we think about contractors when you think about the staff? The reason I ask is that Plano, which is roughly twice our population, they're at the bottom. And Grapevine, which is 40% our population, you ever take at 55,000 or so, they're at the very bottom. So my thought process is that they're more heavily reliant on contractors for the higher salaried areas. How do we fit contractors in this FTE view of our world?
So I don't think, I don't think any of the cities do a lot of contractors. It's just not, it's not a big piece of the business. I would, as you say, I think part of this is Grapevine says 929. I don't know if they're actually paying full-time people 929. So I don't know where you can find somebody to work. Can't find a teenager to work for 929.
Oh, no.
To go work and check for that.
Exactly. So I think there's a part of maybe that's not great data we got back from them. But I don't think I'm getting to the heart of your question.
So that's where I'm trying to go. So contractors, you think don't play a major role in workforce for any of the cities? So.
Not directly. I don't know how you layer onto that.
Well, I mean, we do hire on occasion, you know, contract labor to just, you know, for a single project or something like that to come in. It's not heavily relied upon because a lot of the stuff we're doing, we need expertise and growth of those employees. I don't know if other cities are comparable to us. I would imagine they are comparable to us in that regard. But I'm not quite sure what you're wanting to get at here.
So here, there's a baggage that I put on the table for like days, and what people would have in Castle Hills. There is a big celebration from the 1A Ward that the employee rate had gone down. We scratched that. They just popped up the contractors. So they dropped the employees' account, but they put the contractor account. So the overall net cost to the citizens of Castle Hills was the same award. So I'm always thinking about, now I'm thinking about staffing.
I see. So you're really not talking about like the hourly rate. You're talking about just like full budgetary.
Cost.
Cost of.
Full-time equivalent, square foot.
Yeah.
I was making an assumption that those numbers at the bottom vary so much because of contractors. But what I'm hearing you say is it's probably not the cause of that.
I mean, there's pockets in every city, but I think on the whole, it's not a huge piece of the business. That's really stated.
All right, let's continue.
I was going to say that 929 might be their minimum, but they may never be hiring someone.
Great.
Maybe ignoring that.
It's on average.
Right.
Awesome, thank you. All right, appreciate y'all's time.
Thanks for the education.
Mayor, we also have got some information on Northside Air Conditioning. It's located at 619 Hembry Street, next door to the Historic Chapel, C and E Church.
All right, we've got a little over 15 minutes. So we're going to move into the neighborhood grants update. And this is Ashley Fair.
This will be a little more lighthearted than that.
Hey, come on.
But good stuff, obviously. So again, Ashley Fair, Neighborhood Services Manager. I'm going to talk briefly about our grants and programs. We do an annual survey, so I'm going to show you the results of that. And then I'm going to pass it over to Brian McGreen. He's got some recommendations for these programs. So first things first, everyone knows PEP, our Property Enhancement Program. This is a program for exterior projects of our homes. It's about revitalization. It's about really beautifying our community. The minimum grant is $250 with a max of $5,000 depending on your project and income. I wanted to show you this chart that we've been tracking. This, I joke with this, we always say PEP is peppy because it's a very popular program. We have completed since the beginning of PEP over 396 projects. So really excited. We are this close to reimbursing $1 million in PEP, so we're really excited about that. The main programs, projects that we do are going to be fence or even windows. This is something from the Listen, Learn, Lead. We are now tracking race and ethnicity if they want to provide that information. We do provide PEP application and guidelines in English and in Spanish, but the majority of our applicants are still non-hispanic and white. So we're always looking at ways to find different ways to promote into the community outside of our, the typical applicant for PEP. The next one we have is PEP Plus. So this is kind of a step up of PEP. It is a 25% matching grant up to $20,000, and it is for homes that are built in 1980 or older. So this program we recently updated. We asked councilperson guidance on that. And once we changed to, it was first in Justin Nez, too, which is Neighborhood Enhanced Empowerment Zone, which is Maine, to Bel Air, and 35, and Garden Ridge. It was not very popular in that area, but once we made it citywide and 1980 and older, it became very popular. So here's some numbers for that. We've completed 28 projects. Again, fences and windows, windows are very expensive. So people are really utilizing our programs for that. And again, our majority of our applicants are non-hispanic and white. One thing I thought was interesting about this one is the majority of our applications, or a big chunk are 62 and older. And then we have Neighborhood Enhancement Programs. So this is another beautification program specifically for neighborhoods that have an association or an HOA that have a bank account because they can get up to $12,500 to really revitalize their neighborhood. We've done nine, we've accepted nine projects. The majority of them are interfaith features. We've done some solar lighting. We did a fountain repair. We have denied a few projects, but it was just because of their application wasn't completed or their, the project wasn't really eligible. And then we have code abatement. So this program is in that Nez to the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone. This is specific for homeowners that are low income. They have an active code violation. That is an eligible PEP project. And they would get up to 100% reimbursement, up to $7,500. We did update this program where we would pay the vendor directly for $7,500. However, that has not really helped this program. So we still have only done three.
Really?
Yeah. Really surprised about this one.
I could have sworn that was, that were two.
Yeah. So surprising. We've done three. Majority, again, fence and driveway and then a retaining wall.
Are we getting any feedback as to why?
So Brian has done a ton of outreach. He works with our code officers in that area. He even personally reaches out to the homeowners. And there's just never that follow-through of completing the application and getting those quotes. Because we do have them go through our PEP application, so it's the same process. It's just a different funding source. But they don't go through, they never finish that process. So.
Can we tell if they start?
So Brian will go and even hand them applications at their house. So we are making, doing everything that we can.
I wonder why there's a block there.
We have not received, we have never asked people, why did you not fill out this application? Why did you not want to do this?
I'll say currently, we have a homeowner that has to demo her pool due to it being full of water, and it's a code violation. But $7,500 won't cover the cost. And she doesn't have any funding to cover the rest. And so she's working towards finding a contractor that will get to that rate. And even when she found a contractor that got to that rate, they weren't willing to take payment after the fact. They wanted 50% upfront. And so it just wasn't, it's not really making that impact we were looking for, for everyone.
And then for the love of Louisville, this is our Day of Community Service. We have been doing this for three years now.
Yep.
So really excited about this. We have, our last event was on October 19th of 2024. We had 15 different projects from exterior projects at homes. We did park projects. We've done sidewalk art. We've done a lot. We've last event, we had over 200 volunteers. And we're really excited for our next event in October of this year. So like I said, we do an annual survey just to kind of get a touch point on how people feel about our program, see if there's some tweaks that they would be interested in. So we really like to see where people are feeling about our program. So first question, we always ask what improvements our activities would benefit your neighborhood? And the majority said neighborhood improvements. So the majority of our grants are favor and improvement. So it works. And then, so if you're interested in a 50% grant for exterior home improvements, we can see, so obviously everyone wants that kind of program, so PEP. Would you or your neighbors be more likely to utilize our Neighborhood Enhancement Program if maybe we as a city paid the vendor directly? So now we're paying the neighborhood that match. We're reimbursing the neighborhood. So maybe there's an opportunity with how we do with code abatement, we pay the vendor directly. So these neighborhoods that are not HOAs could benefit from this program. So a lot of people said yes, 79%. And then currently, PEP Plus is for homes that are built in 1980 or older. But what if we tweak that time to 40%? Forty years, sorry, 40 years or older. 68% said yes. There are some that say other, and it's more like we would want more information or we want even newer homes to get that 25%. So I'm going to pass it over to Brian to provide some recommendations.
So everything is supported by the survey that we completed. And so For the Love of Louisville is such an impactful program in the city of Louisville. And our recommendations are that we would utilize our, sorry, our VTO to help with logistical planning versus just the cleanup or just the volunteer efforts. And we would utilize the new citywide volunteer management software. And that we would open this up citywide. So historically, this has been very specific to neighborhoods that meet targeted. So historically, this has been very specific to neighborhoods that meet targeted need, where they had a deficit, where they were low income or older housing stock. But we wanted to open this up citywide and share, share the love across the entire city. Any, are there any thoughts or comments?
Any idea on a date for this? Yeah.
Well, the, the next one is October eighteenth of the year. So code abatement, we want to also make this citywide. You know, even, even though we're making it to where we'll pay the vendor direct, it's not seeming to completely be a successful program. So if we open this up citywide, we can, the, the code officers are going to be able to tell everyone that has a need about this, and I think that the program will be a stronger success. Code enforcement agrees to this. And in line with this, we are also recommending that Nez Two would be removed because the only program that Nez Two is currently tied to would be code abatement. So that, that's another recommendation.
Just so you understand, with Nez Two, that allowed us to do specific benefits in one area that we're not for the rest of the city. So we said, okay, this one area, that was part of Councilman Ferguson's pitch back in the day for council, was that this one area would get these benefits as well as PEP Plus. But then we just didn't see the, the return of people wanting to be, to avail themselves of that. And so that's why Nez Two would then be deleted. We would now make it citywide.
Is there any way we could get information to potential vendors? Like be proactive and like give them information?
I think we can get that out to the chamber.
Yeah. I mean, the type of vendors that would.
So they could inform people if they get a quote?
Yes. A lot of them aren't chamber members.
That's fair.
And I mean, so the ones that you see, like you're looking at, I'm guessing a pool company. And some of the ones that we've had a lot of issues with, there may be vendors out there that would take payment from the city, but they're thinking it's some sort of scam or something. If we could get, be proactive and let them know to those specific types of vendors, we've got this program, would you be interested in signing on as an approved vendor for this particular program?
We could let our.
Yes.
Yeah, we could let our registered contractors know.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. Just thinking is we've got that registered contractors list. I mean, there's definitely contractors that give a percentage back. They, they consider that part of their business. And so this is a way for them to help them give more back. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Good idea. Thank you. So the Neighborhood Enhancement Program is the other program. As you saw within the survey results, this is something that the neighborhoods would love to see more of. And they would want it to be more accessible. So one of the options that we'd like to do is offer a direct payment option to the contractor or to the vendor at a five thousand dollar max, at a hundred percent. This will eliminate the need for the neighborhood to have a bank account. And there are some adjacent cities that are doing this and with a lot of success. Currently, Louisville has two hundred and five residential subdivisions that are considered neighborhoods. And of those fifty-seven, homeowners associations and a hundred and forty-eight non-HOA neighborhoods. So a lot of, a lot of opportunity here. I think we heard from the residents that this is what they'd like to see. But in order for it to happen, we need to make it accessible to them. So that, that is our recommendation. Any thoughts on this program?
And, and just realize, we still need to work through legal on, on all of these things. The, when we originally created this program, the idea was to break down barriers to, to give residents that don't have HOAs in their neighborhood the ability to work together, come together and come up with projects for their communities. What we've seen is because of the need of someone to take ownership of that, there's been, okay, you need to have a bank account or you need to have an HOA. What it ends up happening is we're benefiting the groups that have HOAs and not. So trying to figure out how to right-size that to accomplish the original goal of what we're trying to do.
And then the Property Enhancement Program Plus, this one, this one is simple. This program, you guys helped us expand it out citywide, and it has just flourished. So I'm hopeful that we would see something similar within the code abatement program. But, so over five hundred percent increase in awards from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Completed thirty projects that were approved here in twenty twenty-four versus two in twenty twenty-two. And so far, we've had twenty, we've had eight applicants in twenty twenty-five that if we, if, if you approve our recommendation, their homes were built from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-five. So if we change our policy to homes that were built forty years or, or homes that are forty years old, then this would have allowed for those eight homeowners that applied to participate in PEP Plus. So a great program. We're just making it evergreen so that it would stand, it would adjust as the years go by. And we're also increasing it to allow for five more years of age. Any questions? And lastly, in line with the Parks and, our Park Department, we'd like to recommend that we add a requirement to replace a tree if it is removed. Currently, it is just a recommendation in our guidelines. So we would like to make it a requirement. Any thoughts? Any questions?
How many, how many people take advantage of, I guess, reimbursement for removing dead trees?
For trees? So we've, we've had actually only two tree removals since I, for the past several years. So they're gonna be doing some promotion. They're targeting a, a neighborhood. And they're gonna be doing promotion within that neighborhood to take advantage of the Property Enhancement Program, to plant trees, to remove trees if needed. So we're, we're hopeful that it would be.
Is, the, the cost of removing trees is.
It's expensive.
It's.
Yeah.
I'm just surprised that more people haven't, especially after the stump we've had, has not taken advantage of that.
Yeah, well, and I, I, I correct myself. They've, we've only planted two trees. So removing dead trees and trimming them down to like the stump, we've, we've had a lot of those.
I know we're running out of time. I had a quick question. I feel like maybe we've, I've asked this before, but I just wanted to bring it up again. So for the code abatement program, I assume that we have funds set aside for that. And if it's not being utilized, is it still there?
It is, it is a CIP account. So it is there and it can be used and it's.
Could we, could, is there a possibility that we could approve variable? I know right now there's a maximum of seven thousand. But if there are some barriers where there are certain projects that are just naturally gonna be more and, you know, we, we run into issues like that, would, could we do something variable?
We would have to change our program totally. Like it wouldn't be, I don't know, maybe it'd be a one-off. We would have to change our program to have not a limit.
Not a limit and a, and a whole structure of rules about what gets to be in that higher limit.
I mean, something like that, though. I mean, what, what is she gonna do? She obviously doesn't have money to do that.
So at this point, she's looking for a contractor that would be willing to take it on at seventy-five hundred and with receiving the payment from.
That might be, that might end up being a worse.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you get what you pay for sort of deal.
Which can cause major issues with foundations and everything.
Right. And it could impact the neighbors too.
I know about ten years ago, my nephew had to do that on Walters. And it cost a whole lot more than that.
We are out of time. All right, thank you. Great job. Great thought. Put into that. Appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
One minute, and we're gonna go back. There we go. Good evening, and welcome to the regular session of the Louisville City Council. We do have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and get started. First up on the agenda is the invocation with Councilmember Bob Schreier.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the American and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Good evening. And there we go. We got audio. Awesome. So tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of celebrating our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Citizens University graduating class. So we had a pile of residents who have spent a, probably more time than maybe they thought, getting to learn about their city and realizing that there is a lot going on in a city of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand people. And I'm so proud and excited that we have this program to be able to get people tied in, to understand how their city works and where they can maybe find their passion or their calling and, and, you know, continue to build. Because this is not just a bunch of people sitting in a room here. This is a bunch of people who live in a community, and we need more of that. So with that, I'm gonna ask you all to come on up. I'm gonna be more than happy to shake your hand if you would like. Jennifer will hand you your certificate. And as I call your name, and then I'd ask you to just stay up here because we gotta get a photo at the end. So we're gonna go through here. I think it's by last name, so Sophia Anwar. We'll get it. We'll get it. Hey, Sophia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure you grab that? All right. I've got Kiri, Kira, I'm sorry, Kira Caston. Hi, Kara. Yeah, absolutely. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. I've got Sherilyn Cox. Abigail Crafton. Look at you. Congrats. Eric Fransen. Thank you, sir. Yeah, it's my Louisville purple. Will Hawk. Christina Hearn. Daniel Law. Sunny Lindsey. David Margulies. Hey, David.
Never gonna get rid of me.
No, I, that's, that's why we have this program. It gets you sucked in. Now you're on a list.
I know.
Araceli Kay Zouda. They made it, they made it phonetic. I don't know why. I've got Daryl Rials. Denise Wilson. And Jeff Woods. Now, we do have a few other graduates. We've got Dionne, who couldn't make it tonight. So Deanna Brown, Daniel Spencer, Gerald Uick, and Joanna Uick. So want to thank everybody for participating. I'm gonna step back here. We'll get a couple of photos real quick.
Squeeze in.
Put them in there. Pretend you like each other.
I don't know if that will work.
Can you do it?
If everyone from the left wants to lean right, and everyone from the right wants to lean left, the picture will turn really nice.
Take the card. Awesome. Thank you all. And I'm not, I'm serious. You all are on a list now.
Yeah, we know.
And, and we really, really appreciate it. There was a time in this city when we had to pull teeth to get people to come onto boards and commissions. And it wasn't that long ago. It's back, back, you know, probably in two thousand four, two thousand five. And so to be able to have a pipeline of folks that care about their city, that can be advocates for the city, that maybe can respond to nonsense on social media with facts because they're educated about the city, I think those are all wonderful, wonderful things. And I thank you guys for, for taking time and investing in Louisville because it's, it's a great place to live.
It was a great color.
Good. Good. Thank you. I mean, I mean, you could stay. There's plenty of seating. So excited to continue to see that program flourish. It's a great job by staff. It's obviously becoming the thing to do. All right. Item D one, public hearing. Consideration and ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately point one eight nine acres of land out of the Edmund ADA Survey Abstract Number Eleven, located at five sixty-three Bennett Lane. From agricultural open space AO district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety and general welfare of the city and providing for savings clause repealer severability and a penalty and an effective date as requested by Stephen Browton, RPB Holdings LLC, the property owner case number twenty-five dash oh two dash three dash Z. This small lot is surrounded by light industrial zoning, but maintains agricultural open space zoning, which is considered a residential zoning district. Rezoning this lot will allow for development on the lot to the south. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, seven to nothing, on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have one comment card from Ken Lambert, P E. He is here and available for questions as well.
I, I have a question because I just want to make sure I'm completely clear. This property, it says the, with the rezone of this property, the property to the south can be redeveloped. But it's kind of like, is that two separate properties? Because there's kind of a vacant lot and then there's a building on one side.
This vacant lot to the south, that is proposed for development. And that owner requested this owner to rezone the property to, because the, the AO zoning does impact the setbacks for the proposed development.
Okay, so this property is actually not going to be part of the redevelopment.
Correct.
I understand now. Okay, I got it. So this property is actually owned by the same property owner that owns this building? Would that be a correct assumption?
The building to the south, yes.
The building to the south. Okay. I, I get it now. I got it.
Also, real quick for clarity, Richard, when we say surrounded by, it is literally surrounded by. This is an island of AO, completely encompassed by, by LIs. That, that's right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
I have no, I have no further public comments. If there are no further questions or comments from council, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the ordinance. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second, council, if you'd please vote. Oh, no, I don't need, I have no attorney on this one. Brilliant. Six, nothing, passes, thank you very much. Mr. Lambert, you're excused if you want, but you can hang out here, we, we love having visitors. Thank you, sir.
I'm so glad to.
All right, item E, visitors forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to the beginning of their remarks. Speakers will have five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping feet, whistles, yells, clapping and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, I don't believe we have any comments for this. All right, we're going to move on to item F, the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and being acted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted by the city secretary. Council, I do not have any requests to remove any items from consent agenda, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Item G, regular hearing eight. Consideration of an alternative standard associated with landscaping standards for Northside Air Conditioning on 1.125 acres located at 816 Office Park Circle. Legally described as Hillside Office Park Edition Lot 7, 8 and N9, Block C, Zoned Light Industrial District as requested by Jason Kilpatrick of Ridner Associates on behalf of Lucky 13 Investments LLC, the property owner, 25-05-8-ALT STD. Northside Air Conditioning and HVAC contractor operating in Louisville since 2004 has relocated to 816 Office Park Circle, a site originally developed in 1999, to accommodate the business expansion. A new 3,500 square foot metal building is proposed on the site. Since the existing site conditions do not accommodate the required landscape buffer due to its parking lot location, the applicant is requesting alternative standard to the landscape requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on May 20th, 2025, and it's recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke, our planning director is available for questions. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the alternate standard as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consideration of initiating the board commission committee appointment process and the creation of city council subcommittees. On June 30th, 2025, various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions and committees will be expiring. These positions have been identified and current appointees notified. Due to the runoff election, the initiation of the board commission committee appointment process was postponed to allow the new council member placed for to participate. Current board commission committee members will continue to serve through July 31st, 2025. City council will need to identify city council subcommittees to review eligible reappointees, new applicants and provide nominees for council's consideration during a future meeting. It's recommended that the city council initiate the board committee meeting appointment process and create the city council subcommittees as set forth in the caption above. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Okay. Mayor? I move to initiate the board commission committee appointment process and create the city council subcommittees as follows. Mayor Pro Tim Kelly and Councilmember Meredith for the following boards, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Library Board, Park Board, Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation 4B and Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four. Myself, Councilmember Green and future Councilmember Tipton for the Old Town Design Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Louisville Local and the Louisville Local Government Corporation. And then Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Cade and Councilmember Troyer for the Arts Advisory Board, Animal Services Advisory Committee, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One and Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three.
Council, I have a second.
Second.
All right. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I do have the following reports by directors, Mr. Lutke.
Mayor Gilmore and City Council, last Friday, June 13th, we had three council members, our city manager and five staff members attend the General Assembly Meeting of the North Central Texas Council of Governments. And at that meeting, they had an award ceremony. This is their opportunity to present their annual CLIDE awards. And CLIDE stands for Celebrating Leadership in Development Excellence. And out of about 36 entries, six were selected and Louisville received two of those six. This is a region-wide award competition. And the first one was in the public planning and policy category and it was awarded to Louisville for the Business 121 Corridor Plan. So we are very proud of this and want to thank the council for your support and I want to thank all the other departments for all of their support in putting together that plan and for continuing to implement that plan. It was definitely a team effort. Again, I want to thank everyone.
Just some, some follow-up on that. I want to thank Councilmember Jones because he definitely had his eye on, on that pivot of investing in that corridor. And he's, he's carried that standard and really brought that forward over the last couple of years. Number two, I did get a lot of comments from the COG board. I know several of those folks and I, I really think we should have gotten all three, I'm just going to tell you now. But the, the opportunity that this creates because we do these kinds of things, because we work regionally, is this gives us the opportunity to leverage that into what you may have seen on the consent agenda, which was to apply for a $5 million grant from the Council of Governments to actually work on that corridor plan. So there's some great synergies that come out of thinking regionally and, and putting that stuff up there. So thank you for that, appreciate it.
And Mr. McGinn will give you some details on the second award.
Ours isn't, ours isn't framed yet, but the, the award was raising public awareness for the Louisville Backyard Cottage Design Competition. And just a really creative staff that came together, utilized the grant from AARP, you know, got folks involved from professionals. We received professional submissions for backyard cottages, all different age groups. We had our senior volunteers involved and we even had a Parade U accessory dwelling unit, parade float. And so it was really awesome to see the, the community come together and, and getting a response to this.
Our senior volunteers, every time it was an event, they were so excited to be participating. They really thought it was great. So appreciate staff giving the opportunity. Great job, guys, let's give them a hand. And our, our final director report is from Ms. Stacy Anaya.
Mayor, City Council members, park fans, just a reminder that this is Saturday is our third Saturday of the month, so we have service Saturdays. And we are focusing on a cleanup of Prairie Creek from I-35 back to Old Orchard or even Valley Parkway, depending on how ambitious we get. But if you'd like to register, you can go to playlewisville.com and sign up for Service Saturdays. We also have our Saturdays at the Cabin happening at 10 o'clock. So cleanup at eight, head to Lila at 10:00. And then we have our Loud and Proud Art Festival at Thrive. So you can go on another park crawl throughout the park system if you're looking to do something this Saturday.
Awesome, thank you. All right, and then council announcements, I'm just going to start on the far left. Councilmember Kelly. Green.
I was just going to mention that this is the last week for the, where we're accepting applications for the Vision 2035 Plan because we're, it's time to get moving. I think the first meeting is set in less than a month to get started on that effort. So if you haven't put your application in yet, please do so. And then I think there was also an application that for the Youth, Youth Action Council that is also open. You got a little bit more time to do that, but might as well just do it while it's fresh in your mind. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Jones?
Sure, so this week we'll be having a few events for Juneteenth. On Thursday, we have a screening at the Grand Theater that sold out. And there's a second screening that will be on the 21st that you can get, the tickets are free, but you have to get a ticket to get in. And also we have the Friday concert in Wayne Ferguson. That's all I have.
Councilmember Cade? Councilmember Meredith?
Also, I was there Friday for the, for the events. I just want to congratulate Richard and Chris and their teams. It was good to see Louisville mentioned twice and as we went up there to accept awards, there's a lot of eyes on us and congratulations, so congratulations. Some library activities for the week. Family Tuesday tomorrow, June 17th, 2 to 3 at the Gilmore Established Community Room, no ticket or registration is required. Feel Good Fridays, Intro to Meditation for Adults, Friday, June 20th, 2 to 3 p.m., Crawford Meeting Room, no registration required. And Cross Stitching Outside the Hoop, Teen Edition for teens ages 13 to 18. Friday, June 20th, 2 to 3:30 p.m. at the Hive Makerspace. No registration, or sorry, registration is required for that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, sir. As Councilmember Jones already mentioned, I'll have a number of things for the Louisville Grand Theater. The first thing is the Sacred Ground, the legacy beneath Louisville, our June 19th, Juneteenth celebration, which as Councilmember Jones indicated is, was sold out for June 19th. So there is going to be an encore performance of that on June 21st. Secondly, Will Hearn's Grand Ole Americana Show presented by the Louisville Grand Theater on the 21st. Suzical presented by the Outcry Community Theater, June 26th through the 29th with two performances on both the 28th and the 29th. And Black Box Songwriter Series, Tish Hinahosa presented by the City of Louisville on June 29th. And as always, the Friday Night Acoustic Get Jam Session presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Activities, the Songwriting Workshop with Tish Hinahosa, it presented by the City of Louisville is on June 28th. And then there are two exhibitions right now, Sacred Ground Framing, The Forgotten, presented by the City of Louisville, June 19th through July 12th. And then Louisville Faceoff Exhibition presented by the Portrait Society of America through July 12th. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. The only thing I have to add is I wanted to give a quick update that, and we're really excited about this opportunity, that the, the leadership of Texas State Technical College will be coming to town and we're having a sit-down to talk about locations in Louisville and next steps in Denton County. So very, very pleased to, to have staff continuing to be working on that and gaining momentum. Texas State Technical College is already performing classes in Denton County with Acme Brick currently, but they're also looking at other business opportunities, businesses that need training and development certificate training, those types of things. So if you know a business or have somebody that's in that space, we would love to talk with them about opportunities to help bring this to Denton County and specifically Louisville. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into closed session. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Louisville, Texas versus Cameron County Housing Finance Corporation et al., CAS number 25-4665-367, the 367th Judicial District, Denton County, Texas. Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We are going into closed session. We're going to be back, return to regular session. Council, is there any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the city manager or her designated to take all, all actions necessary to purchase property located at 277 South Mill Street in Louisville, Denton County, Texas for $394,317 plus closing costs.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you very much. There's no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned. It's 7:46 p.m.